Very good evening to all of you. We are humbled and honored to have Dr. Ashok Dalwai with us. It's a pleasure and honor that every year we get to hear a very prestigious voice. Dr. Ashok Dalwai is graduated from signing school Vijapur and went on to become an IAS officer of repute. He served the state of Odisha, the state of Karnataka and government of India in multiple capacities. We all understand the in the Committee for Doubling Farmers' Income and also being the CEO of National Rainwater Area Authority. And very recently, Dr. Ashok Dalwai has joined Karnataka government as the chairman of Karnataka Agriculture Pricing Commission. And every year with respect to the interview and also guiding students in taking forward specifically in terms of agri-economic issues. Dr. Ashok Dalwai has been in the forefront and very happy to hear that he's been in Karnataka so that we get to invite him to the academy and also honor him sometime. Thank you so much, sir, that you've accepted our invitation in spite of all the busy schedules. And the session is overdue, sir.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good evening to you and all your team members of India for IAS. Good evening to all the aspirants. And I understand that the aspirants who have joined this evening are those who have already cleared two obstacles to the final destination. Including the preliminary which is extremely tough in a sense that it is more rejection oriented than selection centric. And the next, of course, the main exam which entails the candidates to read mountains of information and knowledge. That you have cleared these two important obstacles and then you are now set to appear before the board of UPSC for personality test deserves all appreciation. It calls for congratulations to you. You are a few of the people who have made it from among lacs of candidates. Who have been trying certainly for getting into this for years together. So congratulations and this itself is indicative of your capabilities. And that you were cut to become civil servants. So let's go forward and I was told that I should speak about agricultural economics or agriculture economy. So I will give a broad picture of what you what do we mean by agriculture economy? And what are the challenges? And how do we think that we can address those challenges in this twenty first century? And hopefully, the context that I've been sharing with you should help you face the interview board with confidence on matters relating to agriculture. Then later on, we can also have a Q and A session. Now, to begin where we should begin, please know that agriculture is one of the important economic activities or economic sectors of the nation and the world. As we are all aware, we have conventionally been conventionally been dividing our economic sectors into three, primary, secondary and tertiary. So primary includes agriculture, mining, construction and so on. And secondary economic sector refers to industry including manufacturing. And third, of course, the service sector which includes various kinds of activities relating to delivery, distribution. It could be related commodities, it could be related to knowledge, it could be related to finances. Anything and everything in a ways, the tertiary sector, the service sector. It incorporates all the economic activities and completes the final destination journey of both primary and secondary sectors. So that's the important role of service sector. However, in the recent decades, we also have the fourth and fifth sectors of the economy. And this fourth and fifth are primarily based on knowledge, the fourth one is based on knowledge. And that means we drive a knowledge centric economy. And the fifth one gets more sophisticated, goes beyond knowledge to what is called ideation, conceptualization. That means more pronounced, more sophisticated, sharper understanding of the economy. So the fourth and fifth sectors of the economy are also now very much part of our society, both at national level and the global levels. Now we go back to the primary sector, which is agriculture and allied sec economies as well as as I said, mining, forestry, et cetera. So what distinguishes primary economic sector from the secondary and tertiary sectors is that this is nature centric. It is dependent on biological systems of production. So it uses the elements of nature and then converts that that particular energy into some kind of product. If you take crops, for example, we have a photosynthetic process. Where you are using sunshine, then we're using carbon dioxide and water. And that gets converted into food. So photosynthesis is innate to all the crop because they have what is called chlorophyll, without chlorophyll, which gives that green color. They cannot undertake and undergo the process of photosynthesis. Likewise, all the animals, fisheries, et cetera, which are allied activities and part of the primary economic sector. They have the physiological process that is metabolism and they are able to convert the energy into the form of when the form that can be harvested, it can be meat, it can be milk, it can be body parts, putting bones, et cetera. So primary economic sector is very important because it is primary economic sector that has been the harbinger of our civilization. As we know, that after the first man appeared on earth around three point four lakh years ago through the process of evolution. He was wandering here and there, there were different species of mankind also, not just the one species called Homo sapiens. And ultimately, about thirty five thousand years ago, the Homo sapiens whom we call as modern man, that is you and me, alone has managed to stay by defeating all others. But this modern man also was wandering in the forests. And therefore, he was called a hunter and gatherer. He was hunting animals. He was gathering fruits and grains from the forest areas. Obviously, when we went into the forest, nobody could be sure that he'll come back because there are wild animals, there were all kinds of creatures, including snakes, for example. So nobody was sure. So under such a circumstance, nobody can say that, you know, the civilization would prosper, population would grow. The point I'm trying to drive home is that how agriculture facilitated the thing of the civilization. So around twelve thousand years ago, they were able to identify certain grains like ragi, like bajra and also paddy and wheat from the forest areas. Then realized that they could be domesticated, that means they could be sown, grown, harvested. And likewise, they also realized that from among several animals in the forest, some milder ones like goat and sheep, they could be also domesticated. So this way, around twelve thousand years ago, as crop husbandry and animal husbandry began. Now, man was not needed necessarily to go to the forests, therefore he was safer. And now since he was able to grow our husband crops and animals, there was greater food security. And there's a greater food security, then you start focusing on other aspects of life. So they built their own huts, they started living together. This is how the first seeds of civilization from food security to small hutments. Though they're growing into larger settlements because population was now growing, the deaths were not as many as they would be earlier. So over the last twelve thousand years, civilization has grown, we have had Indus Valley civilization, Chinese, Egyptian, Sumerians, Babylonians, several civilizations who have had. And that's how mankind has evolved civilisationally. Now, alongside providing food to this population, agriculture was also providing water for animals, it was providing feed for birds like poultry. And once this became more sure, mankind also started using many of these commodities, including some fossil resources to convert them into various materials that the civilization required. For example, it could be building a house, it could be making some instruments. Even devices and tools required to fight animals themselves or to cultivate more land. So this is how agriculture-based trees or what we put it called agriculture trees also develop. So that's how we have carpentry, pottery, you know, all kinds of activities which also developed around agriculture. What I would like you to remember is that agriculture has been the basis of civilization. Agriculture has also triggered agro-industries. And slowly, these agro-industries which have sustained even to this day are also given to for other kinds of manufacturing activities. Now, what we should know is that when we turn from nineteenth century to twentieth century, the world had just one billion population, whole world, the earth had only one billion population, that means hundred crore. So that's how we entered into twentieth century. Twentieth century is extremely important in the history of world. That's when modern ideas of political structures, our nation formation began. It started in the early centuries, that's how countries like in UK, other European nations, they're already formed nation states. And the modern ideas of justice, liberty, equality, fraternity, which emanated from the French Revolution. You all who slowly, of course, over the twelfth century, the United Kingdom, they now had come to be accepted. And that we separate the church from the state, that means religion and governance must be separated. So when we all entered in twentieth century, now it is time along with European nations and American continent. For those nations which are colonized in Africa, Asia, to also emerge from colonization. They got decolonized around nineteen forty or fifties, forties and thereafter. So we have a new environment in twentieth century where each nation is now trying to prosper. The first thing that in any nation that the the society emphasizes is agriculture development. For example, industrial revolution that began in UK in seventeen sixteen was preceded by agricultural revolution in the fourteenth century, fifteenth, sixteenth. Very simple things that adopted to improve their productivity, safeguard their farms. And that's how the purchasing power of the larger section of the society increased. And that was now supporting the industrial revolution so that whatever manufactured goods were being brought to the market, people could purchase. Likewise, it is Europe, America, everywhere, just remember agriculture revolution precedes industrial revolution. Therefore, now newly decolonized nations including India were naturally focusing on agriculture development. Now let us take the case of India. In nineteen forty seven, our life expectancy at birth was thirty two years, that means one was not sure of living beyond thirty two. While some could have been living in forties and fifty sixties, but some of them were dying within the age of ten. With high infant mortality rate, high maternal mortality rate, high vulnerability to disease, hunger, poverty. So the first slogan that independent India gave was Grow More Food campaign. So Jawaharlal Nehru said, Grow More Food. And he said, everything can wait, but not agriculture. Because agriculture is basic in the sense that without food, which is a physiological requirement, no society can survive. Now, from nineteen forty seven, if you go to nineteen fifty one, when the first fire plan was launched, India's food grain production was fifty one million tons. Now, what was happening was that as you know, till nineteenth century end, lots of people were being born and they're also dying for various vulnerability that explained to you. So there's you know that Malthusian phenomena is their demographic phenomena. In phase one, high birth rate, high death rate, so population does not grow very much. Net growth is small. Second phase is when there is high birth rate. But simultaneously, governments have been intervention to improve health facilities, awareness, education. So death rates start coming down. And at that time, the population blossoms and that's what happened to India. That when we were independent and after independence, our population is growing. If you asked anybody at that time, how many children you have, they'll say ten, twelve. And simultaneously, because of improved health facilities and improved access to food, the number of deaths have come down, so net increase to the population. So and third phase is when people also start controlling their population. So in a way, India has now entered the third phase of the demographic demographic phenomenon. This you have to understand and appreciate is why India faced food crisis in nineteen sixties. Now, despite Grow More Food campaign and then in nineteen fifty one, the whole focus was on agriculture. We had what is called community development block approach, then we had national extension service approach. These two approaches covered the entire country and the new technology, improved varieties, improved agronomic practices, supporting them with 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 some subsidies, all happened. So by nineteen sixty two, sixty three, India's food grain output had grown from fifty one million ton to eighty three million tons. Now eighty three million tons by nineteen sixty three was not bad. Yet by nineteen sixty five, India faced a severe faces severe food crisis. The reason was simple to know that population has grown, but food grain output has not been commensurate with the growth rate of population. So growth rate of population and growth rate of agriculture have to be in sync with each other. By nineteen sixty five, obviously, the growth rate of population was higher than the growth rate of agriculture. Therefore, there was a shortage of food and then India was faced with the crisis of food deficiency. And that's how we that's how we had to go to America, sign up what is called a treaty with them. And under that PL four eighty, public ledger four eighty, which was nothing but and is a legislative piece which was passed by the American senate. So under that, they gave us food, you know, not a free food, please remember. We were paying for it, but they're giving it at a concessional rate. And the food had to be shipped from America to Indian ports. And then through public distribution system, it would be reached out to the people. So it's a matter of shame because after all, if we continue to depend on other nations, they can always arm twist us in the geopolitics. And any sensible and respectful nation would not like to be vulnerable to these kind of things. So government of India then in sixty five, sixty six, sixty seven, started paying attention to increasing the food output. Now, what could be done? One is you increase the area of agriculture. Second one is you realize higher yields. Now, both attempts were made at that time. So increasing area in the sense, all cultivable wasteland and then some fringe forests were all cleared. And more and more area was brought under agriculture. For example, we had around ninety three million hectares of land in nineteen seventies one. Now it is hundred forty one to hundred forty two million hectares. Imagine, we have added another fifty million hectares. After all, where did this all come from? It is all what we call common property resources, cultivable wasteland. That means it could be cultivated with improvement and some fringe forests, they're all distributed with people. Now, this is not very good because when you are diverting this kind of natural resources, that what happens is that the forest area comes down. So today, in India, while as per the land use policy, we should have at least thirty three percent of the geographical area under forests. In our country, it's only twenty two percent. Because a land share under agriculture is around forty two percent. A good land use policy is that which is one third under forest, one third under agriculture, one third under all other activities, that means roads, infrastructure, the habitations, villages, towns, all these things together, thirty three percent. But what we have today in our country, we have forty two to forty three percent of land under agriculture. So obviously, there is less under forests. So along with this area expansion, government, I mean, India brought what are called the new seeds, what are called miracle seeds. You're aware that we brought new varieties of paddy from International Rice Research Institute Philippines and brought new dwarf varieties of wheat from Mexico. And now wheat and paddy both required water. So they were promoted under irrigated conditions to begin with in the Indo-Gangetic, Bejat, Punjab, Haryana, western Uttar Pradesh. And over the last forty, fifty years, it has also spread to other areas wherever irrigation facilities have been created. Let's say Tungabhadra, well, for example, command area in Karnataka, Krishna Bodavari, Kaveri, Hirakul, wherever irrigation facility came up under the command area, paddy area increased. And simultaneously, wheat also increased in the winter season. So what we see today is of the food grain basket, food grains means combined cereals plus pulses. Cereals and pulses are called food grains. So today, in two thousand twenty three, twenty four, India produced three hundred twenty nine million tons of food grains. So out of these, out of this basket of food grains, around twenty seven million tons was attributed to pulses. So three twenty nine minus twenty seven is three hundred two. So three hundred million tons is all cereals. Of this cereal, again, you will find that paddy and wheat account for a major portion. So paddy is always number one, paddy around hundred fifteen million tons. And then wheat around hundred and six to hundred seven million tons. Which means that around two hundred and twenty seven to thirty million tons is just two crops, paddy and wheat. So three hundred two minus two hundred twenty suppose, they are left with eighty two million tons. This eighty two million tons includes first maize, that will be around thirty million tons. We're still left with around sixty two million tons and that will be all accounted for by all other kinds of cereals, you know, melates, for example. So altogether, the point you should remember, India's food grain is highly centered around two major crops, paddy and wheat. Now, this is not good. Why is it not good? Because paddy requires a lot of water. That means we are using more water to produce our food. On an average, one kilogram of paddy needs three thousand to five thousand liters of water. Whereas if you grow Jawaar sorghum, it requires around three hundred millimeters of water. Just imagine, one kg of Jawaar, three hundred, one kg of paddy, three thousand to five thousand. India is not having surplus water, it is also deficit of water. So if we are using more water to grow our food and then sell it to other countries, we are exporting water, we are exporting embedded water. And secondly, because of the climate change with increase in temperature and also changes in the rainfall patterns and increasing number of weather extremes. When you say weather extremes, it could be flood, it could be drought, non-seasonarity of rainfall that is not distributed properly, the yields are impacted. It is also so for wheat. So climate change is beginning to impact the grain production in our country. Where tropical countries are more vulnerable to climate change than temperate countries in the west. So food grain, yes, we have done very well, from fifty one million tons to three hundred twenty nine million tons. That is all, six times we have progressed over the last seventy five years. Similarly, fruits and vegetables also, we used to grow around twenty million tons in nineteen fifty one. Today, we are producing three hundred and thirty five million tons. That means we are producing more fruits and vegetables than food grains, which is good. Earlier, we were producing less, but since two thousand five, there has been a special drive to increase horticulture. Under the various missions called hortical missions are different names. So this mission has succeeded in bringing larger area and horticulture and producing more of fruits, vegetables and other components of horticulture. So apart from fruits and vegetables or plantations, we've got flowers, we've got herbal medicines. If you take all these things together, India produces three fifty nine million tons of horticulture. Then we also have livestock. Dairy is there, animal husbandry is there, fishery is there. So even milk, India has done very well thanks to white revolution, Operation Flood one and two. Operation Flood was introduced in nineteen seventy one, Operation Flood two in nineteen eighty three. And because of this intervention, the milk output also increased from twenty million tons in nineteen fifty one to two hundred fifteen million tons now. India ranks number one in total output of milk across the globe and this has, India has been holding this position since nineteen ninety nine, that is last twenty five years, India is ranked number one in milk production. Yet, the quantity of milk required for everybody as per the prescription is not there because our population is too huge. So whether it is fruits, whether it is vegetables, whether it is milk, also meat and other animal products, well, the quantum of output has increased. Per capita availability is still less. Let's say, for example, you know, we need fruits, for example. We need minimum as per the ICMR, Indian Council of Medical Research, around hundred grams of fruits per day, per person. But our people are consuming around ninety, that is average. Likewise, vegetables, it should suppose be around one three hundred, but our people are consuming around one ninety two. That means when fruits and vegetables, they give us a lot of vitamins and minerals which are necessary for human health. Pulses, we need more, we're growing only twenty seven million tons, that means the proteins are not available easily to the people. Because pulses are the cheapest source of protein. You can also get proteins from egg, meat, et cetera, but they're costier sources of proteins. So you must remember that, you know, while output of agriculture has really grown in the last seventy five years, per capita availability is still not happy situation. Therefore, what we find, somebody may ask you, India is super powerful in agriculture and still why is that India ranks so low on the global hunger index? Now, global hunger index is based not only on carbohydrates which are provided by cereals. It looks at the proteins, fats, vitamins, minerals. If you take all these things together, per capita availability is still not as per the prescribed thresholds. So what do we find ultimately? That there is infant mortality rate, there is maternal mortality rate, there is anemia among the women. So we have got malnourishment. Malnourishment means people are not taking nutrition as per their body requirements. So under that, either you could have an undernourishment, that means you are undernourished or you are overnourished. That's how we got lifestyle diseases like diabetes or obesity, but it's all malnourished. That's how we got lifestyle diseases like diabetes or obesity, but it is all malnourished. So then we, as a result, we find stunted growth, we find wasted growth. Stunted means a child is not able to grow to the height it is supposed to grow. As per the age. Wasted means it is not able to acquire the body weight as per the age. So either there is a wastage of body, or there is a stunting of growth. There are different forms of malnourishment, like washyorka, absolutely related to lack of nutrients. So what does this impact? Agriculture is good, but agriculture, one of the main responsibilities of agriculture is to provide food. To the human society, fodder for animals, feed for the poultry and other birds. But if we are not able to take care of the nutritional requirements of the human society, the impact is that. We cannot ensure health and well-being. Now, if you go to Sustainable Development Goals, what do you say in Sustainable Development Goal One, zero hunger? Hunger, there is also hidden hunger, you may fill your belly with carbohydrates. But if you are not taking enough proteins, fats, et cetera, that means there is a hidden hunger. Therefore, in that sense, agriculture has not succeeded in meeting this obligation of providing nutrition. To the people of our country. Now, S D G two, no poverty, so poverty is related to minimum incomes. Now, unfortunately, large number of people who are dependent on agriculture directly and indirectly are not getting adequate incomes. So there is still poverty. And then third, of course, health and well-being. Health is not defined, not be considered as absence of disease, normally, you know. Health is defined as absence of disease, but if you talk of health and well-being. We are not talking just absence of disease, but we are talking about a well-nourished body. Which is able to carry out all the duties and responsibilities a man would like to. And then only there is something called a state of well-being, because then he can do all that he wants. We want a dignified human being under the constitution, but unless you have health permits. Then you cannot be, cannot be said to be enjoying well-being. Therefore, agriculture is very important, the point I want to drive home is. Agriculture is very important because it provides nutrition. And therefore, it improves or facilitates to occupy, acquire good health. Of course, health depends upon availability of water, other health facilities. But food, which provides the basic nutrition for a body is extremely critical. So, health is important from that pers- agriculture is important from that perspective. Agriculture is important because it, it supports various agro-industries, textiles, for example. Machine cotton, silk, wool, all these things generate from agriculture. And they are processed under the agro industry and processing happens to generate a large number of jobs, okay? Like, for example, there is something, under the agriculture processing, there are two types, food processing and non-food processing. Food processing means you are processing food items for consumption, like, you know, you convert. A tomato into puree, you convert fruits into some juices, right? You polish paddy and make available grains so that people can consume, so this is all food processing. But non-food processing is processing the agriculture produce to generate commodities. Which are not directly consumed, but they are used in industry. Let us say, for example, starch from Jawa, maize, you got starches, different kinds of starches are available. The starches are utilized in paint industry, in cosmetics, in pharmaceuticals, textiles. Paint, so on and so forth. So there are large number of non-food items which can also be manufactured. Using agriculture produce, so it depends upon the type of technology we deploy. And when we talk about non-food, what we are saying is that not only are we using. The main produce, that is the grains, fruits, et cetera, but also use biomass, crop residues, for example. Or skin of an animal, hair of an animal, bone of an animal, viscera of the animal and roots. Crop residues, all these mass which is today considered as waste. That can be also processed into useful commodities and therefore bio-commodities. So friends, please remember, agriculture has a potential to also generate jobs. When you generate jobs, you are actually creating income. So this is called a joblet growth. And then other ways of improving the income of the pharmacies, that you have to help the farmers. To capture more value, maximum value on the agriculture produce. Suppose one grows hundred kuntis of Jawa. If he can convert all hundred kuntis of Jawa into money by selling at competitive rate, then he gets optimal returns. Suppose he is not able to sell hundred kuntis because there is no demand, he is able to sell only fifty and fifty kuntis goes base. That means now he has not earned enough income or he has not generated enough income because he has not been able to capture the value. So how do you help the farmers to capture the value, this is very important. In twenty first century, the challenge is as much of post-harvest as of production. Post-harvest management means once you have harvested your produce, you have produced it for home consumption. But you can't eat everything because you are growing more and more these days. So what is left after you retain for home consumption is called marketable surplus. So marketable surplus must be converted into money. Where does it get converted, it gets converted in the market, so farmer has to be helped to reach the market. He is, he is growing in one village, but he has to reach, for example, a market which is hundred kilometers away, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred. Even thousand, two thousand kilometers away, he needs proper conveyance, transportation. So transportation becomes an essential part of agriculture to capture value. And second, he may not be able to transport immediately, he wants to retain it for some time because the prices have fallen. He wants to store it, so storage, whether it is storage or transportation. Depending upon the type of commodity you need to have that kind, for example, you have a perishable commodity like fruit. You can't store it in dry godav, whereas pulses, cereals can be stored in dry godav. So you need dry godav, cold storage, like when you transport, dry transport like an ordinary truck. Or a cold storage system like a reefer van. Then, the third component, then you need processing because everything cannot be consumed in one year. So you will convert them by, I talked about food and non-food processing so that you can reach up to world. So please remember, agriculture is a value chain. From seeds to production to post-harvest management, compromising. Processing, I am sorry, uh storage, transportation and then marketing. All this together, all these segments together create what is called a value chain. So in India, the biggest challenge today in agriculture is that as we ensure that farmers produce more and more. They should also have to reach to larger number of markets within the country and outside the country. And if we want to sell outside or far away, naturally we have to ensure the quality is there, you cannot just grow anything you want, the way you want. You have to ensure, for example, that pesticides, these are not there. You have to ensure that they are called the demand, somebody may want a green mango, somebody may want a green chili, somebody may want a red chili. Somebody who may want a small potato, somebody want me, want a big potato, somebody wants a red onion, somebody wants a white onion. Just imagine, because tastes and preferences are also different. So an agriculturist, who is a manufacturer in that sense biologically, should also be producing as per the demands in the market. And we have to help him to do that, that means he needs market intelligence. So therefore, friends, you please focus that we need an agriculture value chain. And value chain in India is not still robust. So governments have to make more investments in creating storage, transportation and markets. There are alternate markets, should we just have an A P M C? When you have only one kind of A P M C, there is monopoly. If we have second type, third type, then there is competition, farmers can go to that market where they find the services are better. So, the today in twenty first century, post-harvest management is the biggest challenge for policymakers. Bankers and various other private sector people are concerned with agriculture. Now, if, if I commit to you that post-service management is very important because it captures value. Generate more income, generate employment because too many people are dependent on agriculture, then what about production, is it a challenge? Now, on the face of it, production is not a challenge because we are producing a lot, of course, there are some commodities where we need to improve. Take the case of oilseeds. India needs around twenty six million tons of edible oil. But depending upon the total oilseeds we generate around forty one million tons. We are able to achieve a domestic oil production of around twelve million tons. If our demand is twenty six million tons, and if we are domestically producing twelve million tons. Then we need another forty million tons, where do we get that? So we import from other countries. And import bill is as high as one hundred thousand, that means one lakh crore per annum. So if we are able to improve our oilseed production, produce more and more edible oil within the country. Then that money which is now going on the import bill to the farmers of other countries like Thailand, Malaysia, Canada. Australia will go into the pockets of our own farmers. Our farmers' economy would improve, so therefore we need self-reliance. So while we are producing something more, we are not producing others as required. So we need to therefore now look at how to produce based on our demand. Yes, we need cereals, we also need pulses, I told you pulses, because they are the cheapest source of pulse, uh proteins. And in India, at least forty seven percent of the population is vegetarian, so they would not like to eat. Meat or, you know, poultry or fish, which are also sources of proteins. Even those who eat, among those who are non-vegetarians, may also not be wanting to eat meat every day, they can't afford it, for example. A lot, there are festivals, traditions, cultures, which means that we must focus on higher pulse production. And likewise, we need more fruits, more vegetables, high-value agriculture, poultry, dairy, animal husbandry, et cetera. So one approach to help farmers to gain more income, apart from meeting the food security of the country. Is there have to be help to move from low-value agriculture to high-value agriculture. So high-value agriculture is all this I was talking about. Now, as we support through subsidies, et cetera, the farmers to grow all these things and giving them new technology. One big challenge that has arisen is climate change. Now, climate change, as I told you, it has resulted in higher temperatures. There is a temperature stress in agriculture. And precipitation, today, the total quantum of rainfall has not changed, but the number of rainy days have changed. So from about ninety to hundred ten number of rainy days, it has come down to around sixty to sixty five. When you have such intensity, high intensity of rainfall, first, we, if you do not store, we don't have water when the crops require. Then there is a soil erosion, so there are many problems, so climate change is one big challenge to production. And then, the other issue is the result of what we have done to agriculture in the last fifty to sixty years. As we know, I told you, in nineteen sixty five, food crisis led to. You know, get importing new varieties, but these varieties, which were high producers, high yielders. They were also high consumers of input, they would respond to intensive use of inputs, so more fertilizers. More water, more pesticides, and all these were agrochemicals. Because we use more agrochemicals, the soils have lost their fertility. Today, they are barren, the reason is, when we use more of these agrochemicals. We have lessened the use of compost, which were available easily at that time because we had more livestock. Today, livestock numbers are coming down, farmers are shifting to tractors, so organic carbon is not there in the soil. Without organic carbon, even if you use fertilizers, you do not get the right results. So what we are seeing with the last fifty years is the barrenness of land has increased. And because farmers have used water indiscreetly, soils have turned saline and alkaline. On one side, you use more agrochemicals, on one side, you use more water. As a result, today, the production environment, fertility of the soil has gone diluted. And above that, climate change, so these two together have created a big challenge for agriculture. So nobody can say we do not have a production challenge. The production challenge is not because we cannot grow more, production challenge is because of the technology we used. So today, we need new technology. That new technology has to serve two purposes, one, because our population is growing, we need more food to be generated. We have to also have high yielders, but those high-yielding varieties. Must respond to low inputs, that is a challenge, because we don't want to use too many agrochemicals. So high yielders that respond to low usage of inputs, that to organic inputs. Therefore, this is a new challenge. Our agriculture science has to now start doing research to produce these kind of varieties. Earlier, we brought them from Mexico and Philippines, and then of course we started producing our own high-yielding varieties and hybrids, where we also learnt. But friends, what I am telling you today is in the twenty first century. The challenge to production comes from the negative influence of the kind of technology we used in the last fifty years. And because of the climate change, it has got exacerbated. And therefore, when we are promoting organic agriculture or what is called agro-ecologically sound producing system. We need new science that gives varieties that will respond to low intensive use of inputs. So agriculture in short, in twenty first century, because our population is growing and it is expected to reach one sixty five crore by two thousand fifty. Our demand for food will increase, continue to increase, we have to produce more from the same piece of land. Rather than the piece of land also will decrease because we will keep diverting for infrastructure like roads, highways, habitation, industry, et cetera. From less, we need to produce more, but in order to produce more, we should not be using the same technology as we did in the twentieth century. We needed new technology, so I think the biggest challenge to agriculture is to restructure our system. Reorient it, re-repurpose it. And then along with meeting food and nutrition security, as I told, it has to also generate jobs. Therefore, this processing and other activities like promoting beekeeping. Black cultivation, moliculture, mushroom cultivation, backyard poultry, all these kind of new technologies. They will give additional job to the people. When we combine this with the processing, then it is called secondary agriculture. So primary agriculture is production, secondary agriculture is converting. That agri-produce for in different forms through processing or reaching out to markets for high-value capture. And simultaneously also giving attention to activities that are now peripheral, like beekeeping, mushroom cultivation. What does mushroom cultivation do? It uses the paddy straw as a bag and mushroom can be sown there. So that is a complementary relationship, that is, sorry, supplementary relationship. Beekeeping, if you keep a bee box within your crop, bee pollinates and helps achieve greater yield. So here crop is giving nectar to the bee, bee is giving, helping the plant in pollination. So it is a complementary relation. So we need to identify all these kind of activities as supplementary nature, complementary nature. And take them up as primary activity, main activities along with crops or dairy. So what we need in future is primary agriculture, secondary agriculture, together called primary economic activity agriculture. And the secondary agriculture, it takes you into a bit bioeconomy. Bioeconomy means economy which is linked to renewable resources. Till now, what we are doing is fossil based economy. We take coal, produce energy. We dig iron ore, make iron ore, iron and steel. We dig bauxite, we manufacture aluminium. Now, those resources are coming to an end and they are also generating too much greenhouse gas and that's the reason of climate change. So what happens after the resources are exhausted? Will the machinery come to a grinding halt? Then will the economy come to a grinding halt? Will civilization, civilization come to a grinding halt? No. We have to shift from fossil based resources to using renewable sources of industry. So that means we renewable sources of inputs for the industry. Therefore, agriculture should produce more and more in an ecologically sound manner. Such that it meets the food requirement and simultaneously it also feeds the industry. So twenty first century is going to offer new challenges. How do we produce more using less resources in a sustainable manner? How do you produce not only for food but also for feed, to feed stock for the industry? So that new jobs are created, new income is generated, farmers capture greater value. So according to me, twenty first century is a century of agriculture. Agriculture is going to be the basis, just as agriculture was the basis of civilization twelve thousand years ago. After twelve thousand years, agriculture is once again becoming this basis of civilization. And a new kind of civilization that is bioeconomy, bio based industries. So we can manufacture bio enzymes, bio commodities, biomaterials, all kinds of things are possible. So we also need new processing technology. So I think when you talk of agriculture economy, you must remember all these things. And that our farmers' income is low as per the National Social Organization. We have to help the people to get more income because it is income which ensures welfare. They need enough income such that they need their basic requirement of food, clothing and shelter. Then they have surpluses which can use for health, education, culture. And also still be left with surplus money which they can use as savings or investment in improving the state of agriculture. So imagine, first it meets your basic requirement. Second, it meets your other requirements which will give you greater dignity like health, education, culture, etcetera. Then you need the third kind of savings which can plough back into agriculture for enhancing its infrastructure. So that it continues to grow on a on a regular basis. So there is a big challenge that we have in the twenty first century. So how do we ensure that farmers get enough credit? How do we ensure that farmers get access to infrastructure? How do we ensure that farmers get access to knowledge? How can digital technology help in making their agriculture very, what is it called, precise or smart? So that they use minimal quantum of water, minimal quantum of soil, you know, agrochemicals or organic manure. So the cost of production comes down. So the twenty first century economy, uh you know, will involve agriculture getting more attention. And we don't see that kind of a perception in the newspapers. Space tech, with space technology, nuclear technology, digital technology, they get greater attention. Now, those technologies are supportive of growing agriculture, just like they are supportive of growing industry. But agriculture as the primary producer of food, feed for the primary generator of feedstock for industries. Primary plan for engaging larger number of people in India would would suffer from high population. I think this is part of agriculture economy. So now, in India, needs to look at agriculture in a in a broader sense. And I think there is a lot of work that we all need to do. So I will stop here. And also to emphasizing that agriculture means not just crops. Agriculture includes crops, which is agriculture, horticulture. Within horticulture, there are fruits, vegetables, flowers. Then there are plantations like coffee, etcetera. Then there are herbal medicines, spices. So there are six types of horticulture. Then we have got dairy and animal husbandry. That means there are different kinds of animals, small ruminants, sheep and goat, large ruminants, cattle and buffalo. Then there is camel, then there is cat, then there is pig. All kinds of animals are there. Then fisheries and aquaculture. So agriculture is very vast. And each of these subsectors has to be promoted on agriculture value chain approach. That means from production to marketing by connecting in an efficient manner. So if we restructure our agriculture, we'll be able to generate more jobs. More food, more income, and more importantly, the new methodology and new technology must be such that it is agroecologically sound. And we do not compromise our environment. So that the climate change that has happened, it can be reversed. The reversal depends not only on agriculture, but agriculture also can play part since around eighty percent of the greenhouse gas emission on earth is a contribution of agriculture. The rest comes from other activities. So while agriculture impacts climate change, it also gets impacted by climate change. I explained to you. It's a, it's a, it's a double H. So this is what it is, and I will stop here. Instead of getting into, you know, a textbook like material. I wanted to give you a broader thought so that you are able to, because you would have read a lot, I know, yourself. Now that you will be able to put it in context. You know, and and then answer, because nobody is going to ask you straight question, they will be asking you all kinds of questions. So that your management style is coming through. So you should be able to use what I told you, uh as a, as a context. And build your own information and knowledge that you have to answer the kind of questions that they may ask uh uh in the board, okay? So thank you very much. I'll stop here now and then you can have a Q and A session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Can I ask questions, sir?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, sir. I'm Vinutha from Karnataka. Uh I have a doubt, sir. Uh two questions basically, sir. What do you recommend as the one stop solution to reduce the price volatility and better price realization of farmers, sir? And second question is, uh what is the approach that USA and China have followed? Whereby they have gone much ahead with less number of people, uh they have increased the productivity. Two questions, sir.
Yeah, see, one is that you're saying how do we, you know, tackle this problem of price volatility and fluctuation? See now, since Indian agriculture is also integrated to the global agriculture and global economy. It is increasingly more vulnerable to price volatility and fluctuations. However, some of the steps that India can take is to to adopt what is called a market central agriculture production. That means we are able to assess what could be the demand, what could be the price in the season following the production. And based on this demand and price forecasting, we are able to advise a farmer so that he goes for those kinds of agricultural activities for which there is likely to be a demand. Many time he produces for which there is no demand. Second one is that since we cannot control the production, because once you sow a plant, you cannot control it. It has to go through the logical production system. He can control the supply into the market after the harvest. So if we are able to strengthen our storage system. Then the farmers need not have to go to the market immediately, they can store it there. So when they store it, naturally supply pipeline gets reduced, then the prices will be better. But what is the challenge here? Our farmers do not have the withholding capacity because they are poor. Therefore, the solution lies in offering them pledge loan or loan against the commodity they would store in the warehouses. And based on the valuation, they will get at least seventy five percent of the value from the banks. So the commodity in the storage good hour at the warehouse is pledged to the banker. Based on his value, he gets some money. So that will improve the withholding capacity. So that is called as negotiable warehouse receipt system. So we need to strengthen warehouses, we need to create greater awareness of negotiable warehouse receipt system. So that will improve his withholding capacity. And third one is help him to process his commodities. When he processes, he doesn't have to sell immediately, yeah, okay? He would have sold them to a processor, for example, would buy a higher rate because he knows it will process. So the only way is, the three things that I I can suggest is to have a demand and market led production system. Second one is improve warehousing system and transportation so that he is able to go to the market where there is a demand. And then third one is processing. And then last one is alternate markets. Today, there is a monopoly of one market called EPMC. If we have more than one type of markets, then there is going to be competition. Competition will then rationalize this price fluctuation at a higher level. So these are some of the ways that we can help farmers to become less vulnerable to price fluctuations. And second, what did you ask that?
Sir, how come USA and China have increased the productivity with less number of people dependent on agriculture?
See, one is that you should know that, you know, these were all early birds. All the Western society, you know, they got into industrial revolution in the nineteenth century. Industrial revolution began in UK in around seventeen sixty. There after it spread to America, Europe. So now these countries had an advantage of nearly hundred years compared to us. They were the manufacturers, they were getting easy raw material. Converting them into commodities or products, selling them. There is no competition. Then they also colonized the larger countries like India. So they would take raw material like cotton, need to go from here. Likewise, plantation of many countries, process them, sell them. Alright, so now, when they were doing this, they had to expand the capacity of their industries very quickly. So they needed manpower. So manpower engaged in agriculture automatically shifted to industry because of getting better wages here. But they tell me now in twentieth century, later part, end of the twenty first century. Where now every country is manufacturing something, there is a greater competition. So what happened, market shares is not so easy as it was then. And technology today has become labor substituting. Earlier, technology was there, but it is not labor substituting. Today's technology is labor substituting, particularly robotics, artificial intelligence, that means this speed of emerging technologies. So because of this, it is not easy to shift manpower from agriculture to non-agriculture as has happened in the Western societies. Therefore, I said that we may have to continue to take care of larger number of people dependent on agriculture. Not that India not succeeded. For example, at the time of independence, nearly eighty percent of the people were dependent on agriculture. Today, it has come down to forty five percent. It's a big drop down. Sorry, it was not eighty, it was sixty nine percent approximately. It has come down. But it will be difficult to, you know, say from forty five percent today to bring it to two percent, three percent, four percent, very difficult according to me. Yes, in Western societies, they are only five percent, six percent. So they have applied technology, they should have productivity in agriculture and also non-agriculture. And then there are less population, India's population is very huge. Today, sixty five percent of India's population is working population. That means working population is fifteen to sixty four. So the age group of the people who is in the age group of fifteen to sixty four. Within the population, one forty two crores is a high number. So these are all challenges to countries like India. It will not be, it will not be, it's not going to be easy to reach four, five, six percent as has happened in Western countries. There will be a large dependency. Therefore, agriculture must also take responsibility for creating gainful jobs. We have to adopt new technologies so that we produce more at lesser cost, lesser input and in less harmful manner. Okay, so this is what I would say. Understood?
Yes, sir, but can I ask a follow up question because it was in current affairs, sir, one aspect?
Yeah.
Uh the recently announced national mission on high yielding variety of seeds, sir, in this present budget. Uh one may ask why, uh after a long time, we have brought in this and we focused only on rice and wheat for a long time? What's your opinion on it, sir?
That is true. See, we, it is not that we are bringing new seed technology for the first time. It is because of the new seed technology that our yields have improved. Otherwise, how we would, how would we have reached from fifty one million tons of produce to three twenty nine million tons? It is because we have used new seeds in paddy, wheat, in jawa, millets, pulses, oil seeds, horticulture, everywhere we use new seeds. But our focus, because in green revolution, we did not have the technology, we brought it from outside and the technology available outside was paddy and wheat. And they are high yielders. So that has got sustained. But now we realize, according to our agroecology, according to our tropical climate, we should diversify. So the new mission that government of India has announced in the recent budget is to provide seeds of different crops so that people are able to provide, diversify their production plan. As you know, today, we are focusing more on pulses. There is a mission on pulses. There is a mission on oil seeds. There is a mission on oil farm. So we now need seeds to drive these machines. So for cotton, because you also want more cotton, sugarcane. Therefore, it is not that it has happened for the first time. But today, because of climate change and because of the compromise of the quality of soil, etcetera. We have realized now that we should diversify a production plan and therefore this national mission on seeds. Which the recent budget has announced is to support the farmers with this new seed technology. And there is something called a seed replacement rate. That means the farmers in order to achieve higher yields, they must also replace seeds. If it is a, I know there are different crops, suppose hybrid seed, then you have to replace seed every year. That is you will buy new seeds. If it is a high yielding variety, but it is self pollinated crop, you don't have to do it every year. You can do once in three years. If you are having high yielding varieties, you cross pollinate it, you have to change, change the seed once in two years. So we must provide seeds to the farmers so that they are able to grow them and the productivity increases. And along with seed technology, you require other things, package of practices, proper management of inputs, water, tilling, all those kinds of things go along with this thing. Okay, so the new challenges have made it imperative that we also focus on the right things. Is it clear?
Right, sir. Thank you so much.
Okay, okay.
Yes, it has, it has increased fragmentation of land holding. And I believe that it has reduced productivity and also farms are becoming unviable for investment.
You see like this, see, one is that yes, land division and fragmentation has become a norm. The reason is that population is increasing, people are in need of jobs. If families do not find alternate jobs in the secondary and the tertiary sectors. By default, they have to depend upon agriculture. And our inheritance laws are such that lands are, you know, the property shared equally among the children. And then normally, the tradition is that all the children like to divide all the pieces of their land in an equal manner. Suppose there are two parcels of land, one in north, one in south. And both are of equal size, they are two acres each. It would be alright, the elder boy takes two acres in north and the younger one gets in south. But no, they would like to divide each of those pieces because they believe that the quality of each of those is different and they would like to have access to equitable quality of land. So division is going on, yes, because of inheritance laws. For example, in UK, there's what is called primogen nature. That means only the eldest child gets the access to property. Others have to find alternate job. But in India, every child has equal rights. And apart from that, the conventional norm is dividing each piece of property equally. So land division and fragmentation happening. The answer therefore is increase education, improve skills, create job opportunities in non-agriculture sector so that some may want to shift from agriculture and they would have some arrangement where they leave the property to another sibling. This is how we can bring about production in land. Therefore, what we are doing, we are saying, you know, the government of India has shared what is called a model land leasing act. So that people who got ownership of land but are not leasing out officially, they should be allowed to lease officially. So somebody who is staying in a village is able to manage that piece of land while these other sibling or some other person is outside elsewhere. So all the states must adopt model land leasing by amending their state revenue acts. Other one is to go for farmer producers organization. So that while retaining the ownership, they are able to buy their inputs together, they are able to sell their output together, that brings in scales of economy and improves the efficiency. So these are the initiatives the government has been trying and slowly and steadily those things are being adopted. So productivity is, normally productivity does not suffer even though land is small. What suffers is cost of production. It is cost of production because if you're buying a higher quantum, naturally you are able to bargain with the seller. Since small and marginal farmers are high number, their bargaining power is low. So cost of production, cost of marketing increases. Otherwise, productivity is not seen to be suffering in our country. In fact, small farmers produce better than large farmers. But their volume of turnover being less, they make less profit and therefore the incomes are low. Okay? Understood?
Okay, yes, yes. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Hmm.
What's your view on giving agriculture an industrial status?
No, what, what, what exactly do you mean by that industrial status? See, many times, you know, this has become a very common cliche. According to me, agriculture requires a very special treatment. Because agriculture, as you know, is dependent on nature and nature elements like rainfall, temperature, other factors of climate cannot be controlled, particularly when we have a climate change kind of situation. So if agriculture system is so vulnerable to externalities, where we cannot control the supply, it needs a special treatment. In industry, we can control the production, whether it is, for example, manufacturing a car. If there is no demand, you will stop manufacturing. If you are in textile sector, suppose a festival comes, you know that there will be sale. After the Paoli festival, they says, le- lesson, and so you'll stop, reduce manufacturing. But in agriculture, you cannot do it. Therefore, I do not believe that, you know, agriculture is given an industrial status. But it, when if, if you mean by industrial status, giving larger support, then yes, agriculture is certainly in need of that kind of additional support. But simultaneously in India, people are not in favor of corporatization. Suppose you mean by industrialization, industrial status, that corporates can also buy land. Corporates can take our farmers' land, bring them together into large parcels of two hundred, three hundred, thousand, ten thousand. Then also it is not advisable because the farmers then, if they have an alternate job, it's fine. But when they do not have alternate la- I mean job, they become jobless. We do not want that also. So this concept of giving industrial status may not be really right. And it's good that agriculture status, agriculture is free of income tax, for example. Now, when you say industrial status, then income tax also is to be levied. Therefore, the concept of industrial status for agriculture in terms of what I said is not good. But if somebody asks you a question, maybe you can humbly politely request them, sir, a continuing is not good, but I just, if you could clarify what aspect of industrial status must be offered to agriculture, then I will be able to answer better. You know, you can ask that clarification. Do you want that, you know, industrial status means that we do less support? Do you mean that income tax should be levied? Do you want that it should be corporatized? What aspect is meant by, is meant to be industrial status? So that clarity is required. Only then you will be able to answer it correctly. Do you agree?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. So we are done?
Sir, one question can I ask?
Yeah, please.
Uh, sir, do you recommend D B T over M S P or legalization of M S P or M S P as it is now? Or do you think D B T can do a better job, sir?
See, what is D B T? Direct benefit transfer, right? So any entitlement, any benefit, any entitlement, either it can be given in kind or it can be given in cash. So whatever is decided to be given in terms of cash, then it can, it should be transferred through a mechanism of direct benefit transfer as is being done. Now, what is M S P? M S P is announcement of a minimum support price. Whose, whose purpose is to give a signal to the farmers and other stakeholders that this is the likely price. So that farmer decides whether to grow or not to grow. Second, M S P-based procurement is another aspect. When government announces M S P, it does two things. It first gives a price signal. Second, it assures the farmers that if the prices on your commodity go below M S P, then I will intervene to procure your commodities. So when you procure farmers' commodities, the money that is due to them can be also sent directly through D B T. You get me? So do not get confused between D B T and other various schemes. D B T is nothing but a conveyance belt on which money is sent. Earlier, we used to give physical money. Then we started depositing the money in the bank so that he can go and withdraw. Now, what we are saying is that, you know, we will transfer it digitally. That we communicate to you on your mobile that your money, X amount has been transferred to your account in X bank. You can go and withdraw whenever you want. So this is direct benefit transfer. So do we want to, for example, various subsidies on seeds, fertilizers, water, etcetera, including procurement? We can say, no, you go and buy, I will give you so much of money. I give you so much of subsidy on seeds, so much on fertilizer, so much on water, so much on procurement. You now decide what you want to grow. You get me? That means here, we are not giving kind subsidy, but we are giving cash subsidy. So there are some advantages of this because then what happens is farmer can decide what he wants to grow according to the suitability of the local area. Today, since the kind subsidy, if we give a subsidy on wheat and a farmer grows jawa, he does not get it. He will get subsidy only if he grows wheat. So that means when you have kind-based subsidies, it becomes tied down. So in over a period of time, I guess, entitlements transferred as cash and using D B T as the conveyor belt may be a good way. Corruption will come down, gives greater latitude to the farmers to decide what, what to grow. Because we are saying that it should be according to agroecology. If the arid climate grow low water duty crops. If it is a wet climate, then you can grow for high water duty crops. So climates vary. So you want farmers to grow according to climate, then naturally it would maybe better if we transfer cash. Okay? So hopefully, over a period of time, we may all move to what is called cash-based transfer or what is called income support system rather than price support system. Today, what we need is price support system. We are giving certain price, okay? Fertilizer, nut, urea, if it is an open market, it may be twenty-six thousand rupees per uh, hundred bag, a bag of hundred quintals. Now we say, no, maximum is five thousand six hundred, the rest all subsidy government gives. See, it is a price subsidy, it is a price support, isn't it? So likewise, we may shift from price support to cash. We may say, alright, I'll give you twenty-six thousand rupees, you go and buy now at your rate in the market, wherever you get. So the, don't get confused between D B T as a conveyor belt and the scheme support, schematic support, alright?
Yes, sir, but one small question here, sir. Like suppose we completely transition to D B T in future as you said, sir. Which I also agree, it's a better way because leakage is plugged. Uh, how will we manage the public distribution system for the most needy? How will we ensure the rations are available for them?
Yeah, so therefore government may say, I'll procure, because government also becomes a player, right in the market, hmm? Government may say, I will procure X quantum. Today, it is open procurement support. Instead of, for P D S, I need some, say, let us say, some eighty million tons, if, let us say forty million tons. So as a government responsible for the consumers, poor consumers, I will procure only that much, right? Rest I will give money.
Okay, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
I don't have to procure from farmers directly also. So there are ways of doing that. There is another not necessary that you only procure and then give to consumers. Today, it is a virtuous cycle because you are procuring to help the farmers, you need to use that commodity somewhere, you are using it in P D S. Understand now?
Yes, I understood now. Yes, sir.
I think we have taken many questions and there is any one final question, we will be able to take it.
Yes, I just have one small question. Uh, sir, how can we convince farmers to shift to, you know, the crops which are more climate resilient? Uh, can we have a carrot stick policy or, you know, more mechanization? What practical steps can we take?
See, one is that agriculture is a private sector enterprise. You cannot force people to do something and not to do something. But there is a tool which is available in the government and that is the incentives tool. Suppose I want to promote more, you know, millets. I'll offer more subsidies on millets and lessen it on crops like sugar cane, cotton, paddy, wheat. So this policy, or I will, I will create a policy framework where they can trade those commodities better. Or I'll give better technology, where yield will go up. Today, what happens, farmer may compare jawa with paddy and say, jawa, I don't get as much yield as in paddy. Therefore, I'll go for paddy. So if we release a new variety where jawa yields have jumped in comparison with paddy, then farmers do not mind going for jawa. So the short answer is both technology and price incentive are the two tools available to the society to orient and and change the behavior of the farmers the way we want it. You cannot force, tell them, no, you grow only this. If you grow this, I will, you know, come and damage your crop. For example, in seventies, eighties, we used to do that. In command areas, command areas are notified for a particular crop. Suppose we say Tungubhatra. From copper, rose pete to rice chur, you have to grow only jawa and not paddy. And then what is to happen earlier in sixties and all that? People have grown paddy, the revenue department will go and destroy the paddy. See, that is not the way. First, you are teaching a lesson to the farmer, but simultaneously you are causing a loss to the society. So instead of following an enforcement measure, you need to adopt a incentive disincentive system, understand? And change the behavior of the farmers. Is it okay?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, that brings us to the end of the session and a lot of attention to detail, a lot of ideas. Specifically to those who are facing their personality tests or interviews in the upcoming days, this will be, this will do definitely a world of good. And agriculture is always a topic which will stay in news, which will be very relevant for a country like India. And we are very happy that you agreed to us. And we would very soon wish that you can come to our campus and address all of us on the campus once, sir. That's a wish that we have carried for long. On behalf of Kedaz, uh, the chairman, the entire management team of India Forest, we wish a wonderful career ahead and thank you so much for making time for us, sir.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to share. And yes, I'll certainly come to your place and, and also discuss with aspirants another time. Uh, this evening, I'm in a bit of a rush because I have early morning flight and I need to prepare for that tomorrow right away. So I wish all of you the very best. And just a piece of advice, all those who are aspiring to get into civil services, please come with very clean intentions. Civil services offers a great opportunity to serve the country, to serve the people and also fulfill your own desires of fulfillment, not material desires. Uh, we keep very, you know, it's a very solid and sad thing that we keep hearing that the integrity is not really of high standard these days. And so I would say, on behalf of our society, let me say, like everybody should make that appeal. Please come to civil services with very good intentions, noble intentions. And the service, civil service should distinguish itself by its delivery and honesty, professional integrity. It should also show that it is, it, it, it is, uh, uh, it deserves the kind of support, I mean promotions, the kind of environment that it gets compared to other services. Uh, not just because we have passed the exam, but because we bring in that professional competence, professional integrity and passion to serve the society. So please keep this in mind as you prepare yourselves. Don't come into service just to occupy a position and show the people that I'm a big person. That is the last thing that should be on one's mind. So thank you very much and I would request the academy also to inculcate these moral values in the aspirants. Uh, so that they come into the service with the right attitude and aptitude. Thank you very much and I will see you all once again.
Thank you so much, sir. That's probably a wonderful note to close with. Right intentions for the right path ahead for the country as such, that speaks volumes of your service to the nation also. On that note, thank you very much. Thank you to all the aspirants paying part and we wish to see Dr Dalviseer very soon in the campus. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, sir. Good night, good night, good night.